I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order of your city council. It is six o'clock on May 3, 2016. And we're going to stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance led by Lee Rich.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Johnson, give a roll call, please.
Sure. Mr. Jerome?
Here.
Mr. Roulette?
Here.
Mr. Krail?
Here.
Ms. Rich?
Here.
Mr. Rothson?
Here.
Mr. Slavy?
Here.
Ms. Tillot?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into public comment, I have a couple presentations I want to give out, myself, tonight before we get into the public comment. And if I could, could I have Ms. Johns and Ms. Elder come up there with me, please? Okay, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk serves, provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on all functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Therefore, I, Nick Jerome, Mayor of the City of Mount Dora, do hereby recognize the week of May 1 through May 7, 2016, as Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Gwen Keno-Johns, and Deputy Municipal Clerk, Misty Elder Summer, and to all the municipal clerks for the vital service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, should we show them? You don't want to stand between us?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm happy to be a rose, but...
Nice smile.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work. Okay, we have public comment now, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And we have Dr. Beagle to come up. Does that pronounce that right? Oh, okay, I saw at the top there. You're right, Irene O'Malley, sorry about that. I just saw the top there. Dr. Beagle, that's the person doing the thing.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and all city residents here. My name is Irene O'Malley, and I am the Executive Director of Lake Care's Food Pantry. We opened up in April of 2009 with the intention of just feeding people maybe for a couple of years, and hoping that things would get better and we would go out of business. Last year, we ended up feeding over 25,000 people and distributing over 340,000 pounds of food. Over 37% of our clients are residents of Mount Dora, which is a horrible statistic. And I started to pull some information from beefreelake.org because I was trying to figure out how come we're feeding more people every year. We opened up a distribution site at the Martin Luther King Center. We feed there now twice a month, and why our numbers are going up. In Lake County, when we opened up, 12 and 1/2% of the residents of Lake County were living at the poverty level. In 2013, 17% of the county residents are now living at the poverty level. So in four years, it's gone up 4 and 1/2%, and I think that's not acceptable. There's something wrong, and I had to try and figure out what it was. About a year and a half ago, I went to a Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition Conference. I'm on their executive board, and we had a guest speaker. Her name was Dr. Donna Beagle. She is a national guest speaker. She's been on PBS and CNN, and she is from generational poverty. That means that her parents and her grandparents lived in poverty, and they were migrant workers. They worked in Texas, Arizona, California. But she managed, after 28 years of being homeless, to pull herself up and get a doctorate in educational leadership. And there's a story to tell there, and there's a reason why she was able to do it. I think it's really important for anybody that is involved with civic, you know, the city council, with any civic organizations, to be able to hear her story as to why she was able to do this. So Lake Care's has decided on Thursday, May 19, at Lake Receptions. It starts at 5:30 in the evening. That's when the doors open. Dr. Donna Beagle is going to be speaking there. It is a $30 fee, and that includes the dinner. This is not a fundraiser for Lake Care's. This is for creating awareness on what we need to do to try and bring that poverty level down. It has a huge effect on Mount Dora. There are sections of Mount Dora that those people are constantly in fear of their next meal, and Lake Care's is doing as best as we possibly can. But we want to be able to see other organizations get together and start to try and break the iron cage of poverty, and that's what this flyer is for. I'm hoping, I'm requesting that city council consider attending this event and hearing the story, and then possibly working with Lake Care's and other organizations to try and break that iron cage. Do I have these flyers?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You.
Mayor?
Yes, Ms.?
While Mr. Gillespie comes, Missy and I would be happy to ask if you guys will let us know if anybody wants to come.
She finished? Joe Gillespie, 2022, Sunset Road, Mount Dora, 32757. Three brief things. Long about a month ago, I wrote several people about the welcoming and while you're leaving Mount Dora sign on Donnelly and the mess it looked. I have noticed that it has been taken care of, and I hope it works this time. If not, let's bring out the engineers. Two other real briefings. I noticed from the last minutes, since I missed last week, we had company, my shame, but there was a motion to what I pictured as dumbing down the qualification for the city manager. That's the second position we've had where someone has made a motion to me to dumb down the qualifications. That's a puzzlement. The second thing that bothered me was asking Mr. Groot to look into the building height. I thought that thing died years ago, and other than Mr. Homage bringing it up normally, I don't really know why that would come up again. But again, for me, it's a concern about bringing up old crap. So just to let you know. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council on any subject that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none. We have the approval for tonight's agenda? You can approve.
I'll second.
Is there any changes that need to be done? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any objections? Okay, the agenda is approved, and can we have the approval of the minutes from the April 19, 2016 meeting?
So moved. Sorry.
Any corrections? Seeing none? If you have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? None? Minutes are approved. Okay, presentations. Lieutenant Hunter, just come up a second. Not on the agenda, no presentation, so it's got opportunity for you to say something. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lieutenant Corey Hunter. I'm here tonight on behalf of Chief O'Gray, who couldn't be here. Briefly, I just wanted to discuss, I did send you an email about Relay for Life event. It's this Friday evening. It's the Golden Triangle event, so it's actually going to be held in Eustis this year. Previous year, it's been in Mount Dora somewhere. They decided to relocate it. But we were participating, the Mount Dora Police Department has a team. Each year, we try to raise more money than we did the previous year, and we've been very successful in that. This will be our fourth year. Already, we're in seventh place out of 32 teams at $2,360 that we've raised so far. Second place is only $600 away, just FYI. But we were very excited. The night of the event will be during our jail attraction, which is a big hit. You'll see in there, you have some warrants that Chief O'Gray has put out on you related to being president of the event. If you choose not to show up and be in the jail, you will be a fugitive. However, this is the unique opportunity to pay your way out of jail by making a donation to Relay for Life, and just like in the real world, almost. But we appreciate it. Any participation you can do is much appreciated. It's for a good cause, fight against cancer and honor cancer survivors. And like I said, we enjoy the event, and we look forward to seeing you out there if possible. Thank you.
Where is it located in Eustis?
Farren Park. You'll see in the email, there's a flyer attached to it. If you haven't seen the email, but it's Farren Park, Farren Park Drive. It's from 7:00 PM to 1:00 AM. Used to be all night, but they kept getting noise complaints about all the loud noise, but that's good. Most of the money is raised early on, so...
Last year, I remember two officers showing up at my house door to the interesting surprise of my neighbors, knocking on my door with a serious look on their face, handing me something like this last night. This is getting off the way, too.
Believe it or not, there's probably, if you checked, probably somebody else was in on that, so. But absolutely. But thank you, I appreciate it.
I think my warrant's probably the only one that's really truly criminal, and I'm being charged in impersonating a golfer. And over at the golf tournament, the Heroes Foundation, I had a mayor's challenge that day, and we did collect some nice money for it, but I missed that. I think I only hit the green three times myself that day, so I was definitely impersonating a golfer. Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Okay. These are the public hearings. We don't have any ordinances. First reading of ordinance 2016-18, proposing amendment to Mount Dora's Northeast Community Redevelopment Plan, Mr. Groot?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 2016-18, an ordinance of the City of Mount Dora, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Mount Dora Northeast Community Redevelopment Agency Redevelopment Plan of 2010 to add a new section pertaining to stormwater and drainage, providing for legislative findings, implementing administrative actions, a savings provision, conflicts, severability, noncodification, and a scrutiny date, and an effective date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this is, I believe, the second and last step of amending for the area of the Northeast CRA. It allows drainage improvements to be made in the future, planning, design, construction alike. It's gone through a very long process, and we're almost there. Next time, if you approve this reading tonight, it will be the final reading, and we can implement that in the future. And there's nothing's changed from last time that this was read to this time? Great. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none? Back to the council.
I might add one other thing there, and that is that I think there was a gap in the ordinance that permits, that now permits this if this passes, and if there's any part of Mount Dora that needs stormwater and sewer type renovation, it's the Northeast Community. They are significantly at risk. Many homes are underwater with a small rain, and so this is going to be a wonderful beginning for that. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Thank you for vomiting in the microboard also over there. Thank you. Okay, could we have a vote, please? Ms. Johns?
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Britt?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes. Resolutions, adopt the resolution 2016-23 for negotiation of the City of Eustis inter-local service boundary agreement. Just on back.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is our responding resolution to that we received from the City of Eustis. On March 17, they adopted their resolution requesting that Lake County, Leesburg, the cities of Leesburg, Taveries, Umatilla, and Mount Dora begin negotiations in regard to the inter-local service boundary agreement they have proposed. We think that based upon the expansion areas being proposed, it's very important that Mount Dora sit at the table during these negotiations, and this is the enabling resolution to provide for that. We will meet with them and make sure that our position is firmly known, I would say, to say the least, and come back to you. Everything is subject to your approval and your action. I might ask if Vince would like to elaborate, if you would allow, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead, please.
Good evening. Vince Sandersfeld, Planning and Development Department. The responding resolution in front of you is voluminous document. It outlines the city's strategy. We included a boundary map, part of the Eustis expansion area, the couple more in Leesburg, which will be under interest to the city, but the other area south of State Road 44, east of Bit Road, all the way to 46A encompasses some areas that would ample future annexations by the City of Eustis. So we need to cautiously look at the service areas, and we outline those in the resolution responding. The uniqueness with this Florida statute requirement, and the city attorney can go into those details, is unlike annexations, we would negotiate the agreement with the responding cities in Lake County. So this sets that stage. The process is pretty straightforward in Florida statutes. We have 60 days from March 17, when the ordinance was initiated by Eustis, so we're in that timeframe right now. So this will then start the sixth month next step to do the negotiation. It could come into different formats, and then as things progress, there could be comprehensive plan amendments as boundary and service and land use and development issues come about. Part of the, as you noted, the resolution from Eustis, they had several issues and services they wanted to address. Annexation, maintenance of right-of-way, development land, development codes, comp plan, solid waste, power, hard waste, sharing of equipment resources, emergency 911 addresses included in fire and rescue services. So these will be part of negotiations, how we would conclude that. So the next step, in the next six months, we'll ratify those kind of discussions with the parties. So I don't want to go on too much detail. We did get a lot of material, but it had some communication from the April 19 meeting about the process. So in terms of planning-wise, this is a normal step, and we recommend ratification of the resolution.
Appreciate that. Hey, Mr. Krail, go ahead.
Just for my clarification, Vince, if we negotiate with the parties, Eustis, Leesburg, Umatilla, and at the end of the six months, everybody's not satisfied, where does it go from there?
The statutes will have an impasse clause, which then will go to conflict resolution, mediation, and then from there, there could be various outcomes.
Thanks.
Mr. Sandersfield, how much clout does the county have with regards to this negotiation process?
They're the high player in it because it's part of the counties. They're the, as part of initiating county, so that will weigh in considerable of how to end the plan for the area and do it prudently. And what the map doesn't show, how are we going to serve residents? That's the key. How are we going to protect natural resources and their sensitive environmental areas located? There's neighborhoods, so there's a lot of moving components that, planning-wise, we really need to wrap up. So the county would be involved heavily, of course.
Thank you.
Question I have is the on the north side. I notice your boundaries, as you said, are very, very nice boundaries. Thank you very much. Are they getting started in negotiations? Is there nice and wraps? It takes care of everything that they had said that they wanted, and we can go around that now, which is good. But on the north side, right above where the lakes of Mount Dora is, the city purchased property a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken, and it's, you know, for the Thrill Hill, and should that be included? Should we mark that and change that boundary to include the Thrill Hill property to extend this across 44 and go into there and to extend it into the past, you know, for the Thrill Hill property also?
Generally, Thrill Hill is north of State Road 44. North of State Road 44 is the Waikato-Callah Rural Protection Act area. The general land use pattern is conservation. So as we look at the maps, yes, but we would see how that would play in terms of services. Yes, there can be opportunities if...
The reason I'm asking the question is because we're submitting this as part of our resolution, okay, these boundaries. So if we don't include it, is, are we going to be able to include it down the road during the negotiations? Are we going to be, what we're submitting now is our boundaries, what we're going to be negotiating for. So if we need to, so I'm saying that we need to incorporate, extend that boundary around the Thrill Hill property also.
I would see if the city attorney can help me with that analysis, Mr. Word, with that. I hate to put them...
Anything you want on the table, Mr. In the map.
Question is, do we want it on the table?
That's the question, is do you want it on the table?
I'm sorry. Up and down is confusing me on this. If you want it on the table, you should include it, but that's the fundamental question, is do you want that on the negotiating table?
I think it's, city, we bought it, didn't we?
Yeah, we bought the land. We owned the land, correct? No doubt about that. But Mr. Peters, can you shed a little light on that?
Yes, sir. One second. I wanted to speak up because we are going through the process right now of getting site plan approval from the county. They've been very good to work with. Once we had that site plan approval, there's really no compelling reason to be in the city at that point.
There's no compelling reason to what?
To be in the city, to have the city boundary, ultimate city boundary, be around that property. We're fine being in the county because we will have a permit to be there.
Okay.
Plus, as I understand it, and Vince, you can help out with that, you mentioned this is a conservation area. It wasn't conservation, but you mentioned that it has some special statewide protections, and I'm not sure that's appropriate for housing and other development issues. That might be an issue, if I, am I correct?
That's what appears from some initial research, is the Waikato-Callah Rural Protection Act area, and their land use designations is conservation, so...
So in line with the previous question is a follow-up. If we see there's a need to add that later during negotiations, my understanding is we could still add it at that time?
That's our understanding.
As long as we're not locked out of, in case we'd have to include that down the road, because since we do own that property, that is my only question. I don't want to get locked out now by not submitting it at this point. If we need to make the amendment now, we can do the amendment now, but if we can do it later, then that's fine. I have no problem with that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do we need to read the resolution?
Do we have a, do we get a motion on this yet?
I know it, but we need to read the resolution.
Okay. Resolution number 2016-23, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mount Dora, Florida, accepting the invitation of the City Commissioner of the City of Eustis to engage in negotiations with regard to an inter-local service boundary agreement and joint planning, provided that the process is guided by sound and generally accepted land use planning practices and principles, providing for findings, providing for a map exhibit, providing for implementing administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And that's the resolution by title, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And the resolution, 2016-23?
A second.
Okay, anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Mr. Mash. Name, address, three minutes.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Cross Winds Way. Just an observation, if you're talking about negotiations, my belief is that you reach out for more than what you want regarding that as something that you would concede in negotiations, as opposed to asking for only what you want. Then you have nothing to deal and nothing to trade in the negotiation process. So I think y'all might want to be a little more assertive. They have definitely demonstrated a high degree of aggression, not even assertiveness, and as such, I think we should be more assertive than we are. And if that, I trust our street men, but I think we should perhaps ask for that because they could, you know, if the county says we don't want it anymore, and it moves out of the county, then they could impose onerous conditions upon our life and/or any areas around it where their residents will start to say, you know, that thing stinks. Eustis, you need to quiet that thing down, shut it down. Whereas if it's surrounded by Mount Dora land, then we have a little bit better of a position. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anybody else wish to comment?
Tom Cutschaw, 346 East Sixth Avenue, Mount Dora. I was just curious if, since Eustis, it's my understanding has already run sewer and water to the publics, do they have some kind of leg up as far as having done that?
Those will be some of the questions I know are going to be asked. If Mr. Inback just wants to quickly answer that, that's fine.
In my opinion, my experience, no. I personally lived in a community that was served by another community, even though I was in the corporate limits of the first and had no jurisdiction over the boundaries of that initial city. So my experience says no, just because you have some. We do have plans for utilities there. We have made expenditures for improvements there, so we have a leg up, in my opinion, in that area.
Okay, anybody else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none? Back to council.
The mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please.
I'm just curious. I think you had a lunch with Mayor Holland of Eustis a week or two ago?
Yes, I did.
And it was about the land issue?
No, it was not.
Okay, because he told me it was, so I was just curious what kind of went on in the lunch, that you're talking about the land.
It was personal lunch. We did not talk about the land. It was initially going to talk about it, but we did not talk about it. So, thank you.
Okay. As any other surrounding...
Leinbach just wants to quickly answer that, that's, that's fine.
In my opinion, my experience, no. Um, I personally lived in a community that was served by another community, even though I was in the corporate limits of the first and had no jurisdiction over, uh, the boundaries of that initial city, so my experience says no, just because you have some, and we do have plans for utilities there, we have made expenditures for improvements there, so we, we have a leg up, in my opinion, in that area.
Okay, anybody else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none, back to council.
The mayor, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Um, I'm just curious, um, I think you had a lunch with Mayor Holland of Eustis a week or two ago?
Yes, I did.
And it was about the land issue?
No, it was not.
Okay, 'cause he told me it was, so.
No, it was not.
I was just curious what kind of went on in the lunch, that you were talking about the land.
It was personal lunch, we did not talk about the land.
Oh.
Though that, it was initially going to talk about it, but we did not talk about it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
As, um, any of the surrounding communities showed, uh, interest in getting involved with the opposition?
We have heard from the planning staff, which is normal of Lake County, uh, but we haven't heard from the sister cities.
Excuse me. Um, no, no conversations with the council people, please? It's, uh, not, not appropriate.
If anything.
Give me a break. Okay, go on.
And as a follow-up, uh, in the adoption of the resolution, we'll send the, um, timely, we have seven days to send a letter to the, uh, various cities, like, and that will be done tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, yeah. And just a follow-up on, um, but the, the thing, the point that Mr. Masterson made, and, uh, I'm just thinking again on that, you know, if we include that, uh, is this something, even though it's going to be Lake County, we're going to get permits, like you said, and we base, that's going to be our, our, we, I guess we own that, okay, even this is Lake County, but at any point, would we, would we want ever then to annex that portion? Because this whole thing about what we're doing with the, with the Eustis is about the potential for annexation, okay? Would we want to do, and have that part there, so then we have that ability to annex that little bit of land that's between 44 and going up to the Thrill Hill property, which is probably a few parcels of land in between there? And that's, I think that's the main concern, and, um, you know, from that standpoint, you know, about the annexation portion of it, do we need to, or don't we need to, or do we want to, or do we want to have that ability to have that put into the plan to start with? Because there is a question of annexation. You, um. This is the Lake, this is the Lakes of Mount Door, so we're looking at this area, I think the Thrill Hill area is right up in this area right here, if I'm not mistaken. Right in this area right here is the Thrill area, and we're right in this area right here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is, I don't think it would do any harm to do that, to include it, uh, just to play it safe. Uh, we could do it down the road as the entire process is negotiated, but we can do it right from the outset, if you are so, so desiring.
Would we have to bring it back? Because we're not going to be.
No, we're just, we'll, we'll pass, we'll pass the thing with, uh, the resolution with that amendment, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the council to include the, include the, the land, I guess, area from 44 on up, and to include the Thrill Hill.
Do you generally like the crosshatch area that just quickly penciled in on the map?
I don't have a problem doing that, Mayor, and council members at all, if it's, if it doesn't do us any negative, if it isn't negative to us in terms of negotiation, the more the merrier in terms of offense, if you quote our citizen.
I get a motion to make the, include that amendment in the resolution? So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, and this will be including the hash mark area that, uh, Mr. Sandersfeld outlined, and that will be redrawn and put on the, uh, on the resolution on a permanent basis. Okay, um, that's something we need to do, we're back here. Any other comments from council?
I've got a couple. Could you, could you tell us where the actual property is that we own? Is it, and, and you can be eyeball or kind of close, is it contiguous or touching State Road 44 in some way?
Our lines will be, our property doesn't go into 44, no. I mean, the, you talk about the Thrill Hill?
Right.
No, it doesn't go, I don't think it goes up to 44. So he's cool.
It's a big spot. Also minus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, have a, um, please, Ms. John.
This is, is this an amendment, no?
It's going to be, no, this will be, uh, this resolution including, including the hash, the hash mark.
What you could do, if you want, the original motion.
The motions, you're right. Let's vote on, let's vote on the amendment, and, uh, because we have two motions, thank you very much.
Do you want to vote on the first motion first, right?
Um, on the amendment, on the amendment.
You want to vote on the amendment first? Okay, let me just make.
To include, include that area, and then we'll vote on the full resolution.
All right, you need one here. Okay, this is voting on the amendment. Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Slaby?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Again, we'll have a vote on the resolution.
Okay.
Including the amendment now.
As amended, yeah.
Do we need to reread it?
No.
And that is going to be Mr. Rothson?
Yes.
Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Slaby?
Yes.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Crail?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes, thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, we will update the map, and, uh.
When we send it out, we'll make sure you all have the updated map.
Thank you, thank you very much, good, so, I think we're well covered. Mr. Masterson, that'll take care of that, that was a very aggressive move on that one, so, thank you. Okay, um, we have some old business, uh, we had, um, tabled, uh, city council chambers layout, uh, to this, uh, to this week, to allow, uh, Mr. Rothson and Ms. Rich to be here today. They'll talk about that. Um, the, you have the, it was in the packet, uh, what was included in that, um, bottom line was a, um, Mr. Peters, let you go, you're up, since you're up to it, um, Mr. Leinbach, you got anything to say first?
No.
Okay, Mr. Peters?
I don't believe I need to add anything other than I'm here to answer any questions you may have. It's basically the same package that last time.
May I say one thing? In terms of the, um, in terms of the security of the building, uh, I want our police chief to make a presentation to the mayor and council, uh, that's a really separate, uh, but related matter, but it's something of paramount importance, I think, for our, for our city hall, and we'll do that at a different time, if that's all right with you.
Okay, that's going to be more into the, uh, the CIP budget time for the future budget?
Yes.
And everything, okay, so we can put it inside the plan for there?
Correct.
And there's quite a bit of extensive work that, uh, they would like to see done in the future, on that. Uh, Ms. Rothson?
Um, I thought it was, uh, interesting discussion that I read, uh, last time. I know that council member more than one have suggested round tables, and I like the idea of table rights, don't have to do like this. Uh, and I don't know that we need to renovate the entire hall for that purpose, but, uh, I certainly like that idea, and I like security, uh, as a matter, uh, and I don't mind even having, uh, architects hired to study that. I'm not sure, I'm, I don't know where I'm at yet, I'm not sure I support the entire reservation, renovation, excuse me, of the city hall to gain, uh, a dozen seats or so.
Okay, just real quick then, uh, let me clarify something.
Sure.
The, the table here and maybe some of the company chairs here, that's all that we were looking to do.
Oh.
The rest of it is only like eighteen thousand dollars in that, in that range there. The rest of it is for, um, go ahead, general, cause, that was, that was after we had to go some tearouts, which, I understand that we can't do.
Let me briefly go over it.
Go ahead.
What we're presenting here is eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the new dais.
Okay.
Um, the, the balance of it, depending on which plan you went with, there were two plans, um, one of them keeps the two doors where they are. We would be able to gain ten additional seats. Uh, we would also move these walls back on the side to the structural element to improve the sightlines. Um, that is about a sixty thousand dollar project. The second option would be to completely reconfigure the doors, to have a single door and a single aisle, uh, that results in eighteen additional spaces, same wall work and everything. Um, it's extensive work, but, you know, if you're going to be doing security upgrades and all that, then maybe the opportune time to do it, because you would get a, a saving with regard to mobilization and that type of thing, that can be done later. The dais, um, fairly simple design, fairly simple construction, the eighteen seven fifty is on the high side, I don't want to be the low bidder, um, so I tend to be high on that, and, uh, but that was to address the issue of not only you all being able to see each other, but having people not have to look at the city attorney's back and the city clerk's back. Um, so, it includes the sightline not only for the council members, but for the audience also, and that's what was being proposed, which is simply the dais.
Okay. My mistake.
So sixty thousand for a table and knocking down two walls?
Pardon me?
Sixty, you said sixty thousand for a table and knocking down two walls?
Tables, walls, door, and buying chairs for out here.
No, no, what if you, what if you keep, keep the same, do it, look, I'm in favor of doing this in chunks.
Yes.
No, I think we are, I, this is, this is what I like to do, keep the doors, get a curved table, upgrade the, the, the Publix chairs.
And that's additional.
Add additional chairs, move these walls so we have a little better sightline, I don't think we need a raised dais or anything fancy like that, everybody's on the same level, and that's it. And then concentrate funds later for an additional, once the police department has presented to us what they think the security upgrades are, you know, I'd like to see some audiovisual upgrades to be able to, um, coordinate with the minutes so that it's easier for people to, you know, listen to what actually happened when they look at the minutes, and I believe that, and that one, I think, is already in progress. So I'd like to kind of keep it bare bones for now, and, and I think we could also look for some, um, creative funding sources for this, as, as well.
Um, just so you know, the, uh, what I call option app, which is leading to two doors, is sixty two thousand ten dollars, and that includes some, um, audiovisual money set aside for, uh, screens and that type of thing. Um, the, the one-door option was seventy one thousand seven fifty, so you gain eight extra seats, and you do a whole lot of work for nine thousand dollars.
And, and what's the, what's the, the life term, you know, what's the, how long is this going to last? How long will this last?
Well, I would, I would share with you, when I worked for, um, Altima Springs, I did a, um, a major renovation of their city commission chambers in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, and they're still using the same room.
So twenty years?
Yes, ma'am, twenty years.
So sixty over, and sixty would be sort of on the high side, and then so you're, I mean, I don't think that's very much.
Okay.
You want to make it nice?
My.
I, I recognize this role, you can use.
Okay.
You go ahead.
My understanding, I'm just, maybe this is Scandinavian and we're a little confused, the purpose of this today is just to talk about the council table and dais and this seventeen thousand dollar thing, the rest is capital and CIP issue that we'll be dealing with in the nineteen, two thousand seventeen budget, do I understand that correctly?
This is, I think, I think this is my understanding, I think this is what Mrs. Till is leaning towards also, and, and I think this, and that was my understanding too, just to get this, this dais arrangement up to date, okay? Get something that looks a little more presentable to the public and the guests that we always have come in here to our, to our thing, and, and our, and for the convenience of, of the council here, that there's, there's no doubt that that, that desperately needs change and, uh, to do that, so we can see around and do the things that we need to do. Um, but the rest of it, like I said, the walls, the other things, and there's other issues along with the, that, that the, uh, security issues that need to be addressed, those things that we can address in the, the CIP budget. Okay, this is what I'm thinking, and that we can do that over to, you know, the next year's, but we got next year's budgets comes up, you know, comes out in October the first, so, uh, there's things that can be done, kind of close to what we'd be looking at today, so, uh, I have no issue with doing it that way, and, uh, take care of the dais, and then address the, the rest of it, uh, because if you include chairs, also all the chairs necessary, um, at this point, uh, you're looking at a, you're looking at another big chunk of change, because I, if I remember seeing it, that, that was, you're looking at a couple hundred dollars per chair to replace all the chairs.
About a hundred and forty dollars a chair.
Hundred and forty, okay, so that, that gets quite expensive, so that can, that can wait probably until the, um, until the October first budget, that point we get it into budget and look at it at that point, give you time to, you know, it's a long back time to find the areas to, where it comes from, how we'd go about paying for it, because there is money that's going to be left over in this year's budget, I'm sure.
I'm satisfied.
Okay. Mrs. Rich?
Okay, I'm going to be the naysayer in this, I'm so sorry, but I like looking at the constituents. If I need to look at you, I can do this. I am not for redoing this room. How many emails I'm getting about the water utility bills? Services is what we need the money to go to, not the chambers. I'm sorry, if we have a big crowd, we go to the community building. I'm just really frugal on spending, and I think someone had quoted one time, OPM, does anyone remember that? My first year on council, other people's money, and that's exactly what's going on, and I had to listen to it for a year, and now they want to just redo this, and it's ridiculous. I've heard constituents just say it's ridiculous, spending eighteen thousand dollars, our water bill's going up, fire assessment, all the stuff that we need as taxpayers, not for all, so I can see y'all, I'm sorry, I like looking at you all, if I need to look at my, um, council members, I can look like this. That's my opinion.
You're going to deny me to be able to look at you every night?
You can see me.
Well, wait, now because he sits, like, he sits up here like this, you're, you're, I can't see anymore, that's it. And, uh, thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, start out with saying, Ms. Rich, that I agree with you, um, ninety-nine or a hundred percent. Um, I want to bring.
I just got a bit funny, but I got to just stay here.
I'm writing it down, I'm writing it down, so. I wish I could have seen the look in your eye when you said it, though, but, um, so anyway, um.
You're the OPM, right?
Yeah, that's good. Um, so, just to, to remind everyone, back in December, I mentioned, and I listened to it, where I asked if we could move the tables, because I must admit again, I don't know what a dais is until recently, um, I asked that we move the tables so they could see each other. Um, in January, when we had the meeting of the community building, I, uh, ran my mouth on how it was nice to see people. That is all I wanted. Um, so, now that we're in this, where it's kind of become a little bit of an omnibus spending bill, um, mid-cycle, I really would say from process alone, we should be putting this aside, because I would much rather decide whether we should spend this eighteen, which, you know, come budget time, I might say it's time to do it, but to spend this eighteen thousand dollars now without having the opportunity to measure it against some other, um, outlay, this doesn't seem fair to the citizenry. So, on substance, I speak against it. Um, I, I don't know the best way to do it, I've got pictures, and I'd be glad to show them, but on Sunday, I was steamed, uh, when I was thinking about this, I went around this building, outside of it, and took pictures of things that were not to code, as I understand it. There are several outlets without covers, there's, um, it's a hazard, um, the drainage, I didn't take pictures of that, there's some things that could be painted, um, there's a, a disconnect for an AC that's, um, blocked by the AC unit and really is not to code. There are tons, tons of things that I would love to spend eighteen thousand dollars on, other than this setup here, and, um, I am completely against the idea of spending the money at this time, and certainly ninety-nine percent sure of spending it ever, because I look around here and I could, in the time I ran my mouth, rearrange the darn tables so that everyone could look at each other. Separately, if we can't do it, how about if we rearrange the peeps? I'll take that chair, or that chair, or that chair, and we can have it in such a way that we can all see each other. The one part I don't agree with is, in the, in Robert's Rules meeting, that, you know, uh, comments should be directed to the chair, and you should be able to see the chair, get the chair's attention and whatnot, so that's why a little angle, I think, is important. But I will live with this before I vote yes to spend, I, I mean, you might twist my arm for a thousand dollars worth of tables, because I went on OfficeDepot.com and figured out I could do it for under a thousand dollars with code tables, um, but anything more than that, you can go six to one or five to two, because I guess we're hooked on this one. Um, so, that's just all I've got to say on it, thank you so much. Mr. Rothson?
Um, I, it seems to me the best thing to do is, we all make some good comments, if this is put in as a package, it could all be a capital budget issue, including the dais, as you call it, and, uh, and that, that's deferring it for, deferring the final decision until October, well, actually, until before October, when we make the decision. And so, uh, it's, I think it's something we should eventually have a table, uh, that, that is, respects the chair as well as the council members and, and the public, but, um, I think we can wait until October. October.
Any other comments?
I agree with Mr. Slaby. Last meeting, he tried to kill this whole thing, and then it was put off till the other two council members came in. But starting off from rearranging the tables to growing to a life of its own of seventy-one thousand dollars, you know, like Mr. Slaby says, we've got other things to spend money on at this time. I'm opposed to this at this time.
Okay. So we didn't have a, we didn't have a motion on this, did we?
No.
Okay. We can just, we can either take a motion on it, or we could just go ahead and, so I'm getting a feeling from, from the group, that, that it's something that we want to do and look at, but look at it during the CIP process, and that we can include it into the budget that would start on October, the portion maybe this coming year, and a portion the following year, whatever we need to do at that point.
Do you want me to make a motion to defer this, to?
Take a little.
It'd just, we'd just be discussing this, we can put this discussion in our CIP, and it should mainly just a direction to the city manager.
Okay, that's all.
And that's all we need to do at this point.
Include it as part of the deliberation.
Right. We'll just do it that way, and then they give Mr. Peters time to work up some additional numbers, and I have no problem with that. It's the only reason that we, you know, came up with it, because it was a suggestion from Mr. Peters, there was some money that, that he was able to get to do some things this year, and so it was brought up to the council from that standpoint. But if that's our desire, that's fine. We're good to go with it, and we'll just move it that way.
That brings up a point there. Are we going to lose some non-public money if we don't do this? Pardon me? Are we going to lose some non-public money if we did the dais?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Is there a motion?
No, there's no motion. This is a direction to, it's going to be part of our CIP proceedings as we go down the road. Okay. Thank you so much for those comments tonight on that. New business, we have an approval to rebuild the traffic signals at Fifth and Alexander and Fifth and Donnelly Streets, and I'm a little scratching my head on this one too. But please explain.
Yes, sir. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Landback, if you want to.
It's quite right. What we're recommending is on expenditure of eighty-six thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars and eighty cents with, we contract with Lake County for our operations, for our traffic signal maintenance. They've advised us that our signals are at Fifth and Alexander and Fifth and Donnelly are very old to the point of not being able to obtain parts for repair, and so they both need to be rebuilt. Typically, in the past, we've funded this out of electric fund, and I've done some digging into that, why. They used to have a maintenance person in the electric department who did the work ourselves, evolved into just contract with the county to do so, and every county, or every city in Lake County, with the exception of one, does the same. And so we recommend definitely the, the rebuilding of the two traffic lights for the stated amount, traffic signals, excuse me.
Okay, two, let me see, okay, there's, okay, that says, there's the two lights, I'm trying to picture the intersection there. We have, we have the four corners, each have their own little light stands over there, you know, for the, for the walkways, and anything going to be done on those?
Yes, we've had the timing issues and so forth, and Mr. Peters can address that. But yes, that'd be incorporated in the, in the rebuild as well.
Okay, and then that's all, and that's the lights across the top also, that are strong on the wires across the top.
I met with the county engineer last week, Tom Flaherty, having fun. Last week, can we deduct the pedestrian issue at Fifth and Donnelly? And what we have agreed to, the city will conduct a timing one study to each area. My observation had been that the problem we have down there is when each direction, east-west and north-south, when they get a green light, the parallel pedestrian movement gets, are told they can move. The problem is, in that area, there's a very high number of left-hand turns and right-hand turn, very few straight movement. So consequently, every right-hand turn, every left-hand turn, there is a vehicular pedestrian conflict. So one of the ideas that I approached the county engineer with is to add a pedestrian-only cycle. It would be for like twenty or thirty seconds, whichever we determine, it'd be based on time of day, based on actual pedestrian traffic. But that way, when you hit the pedestrian button and you get a pedestrian sign, you know you're not going to be dealing with vehicles. And likewise, when you're in a car and you get a green, you know you're not going to be having pedestrian in your way. So that was something he was open to doing, and I think it would have, it would help tremendously with the pedestrian. Even with this improvement, we have the ability to come in and change the cycles after the fact, so we are working with him on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This, this issue was brought, this issue was brought to me by a constituent of mine who was sight-challenged, and one of his problems was the fact that when the audible signal was going off for walking, that he was constantly being bombarded with turning vehicles, and has almost been hit more times than he cares to count. And so I think this is something that needs to be done for, for public safety.
Well, I think if anybody's ever crossed that street, they, they were at risk of being hit. And I was walking across one day, and a car just kept coming and coming and coming and coming, and he just wouldn't stop. And, you know, he's making his turn, and I had my, my little white things had to walk, and I'm going at my nice pace, but he just kept going around, so I had to do the stopping, and he didn't, because he was on his cellphone.
Isn't that usually the case?
Yes.
I had comments from more than one constituent in my district, and that is, that Fifth and Donnelly is a significant safety issue for everybody in this room that bothers to go down. That's all of us folks. And maybe when streets are redesigned and we have some time and that we can deal with really improving, you know, different phase that area, but right now, it's an accident waiting to happen. And don't forget, I don't mean to use the L word on you, but there are serious liability issues for things like that if we don't, aren't up to standards on things like that. So I totally support this. It's in the budget, we have cash, we have capital money to do it. That's what it's for, is to use capital money for capital issues. It's a capital issue, and we should do it yesterday, not today.
Mr. Krall.
I agree. Thanks, Mr. Peters, for your leadership on this. This is money well spent, public safety, and, and I don't mind looking around the corner here, because I think this is a much more important, more pressing matter. So thanks for your work on that.
The, the only concern that I had had, or whether it's really a concern, I guess a question, was whether the electric fund was the appropriate fund to take these funds out of, considering that this is, you know, really benefits the whole city and not the, not the entire population of Mount Dora is served by the electric fund or pays into the electric fund. So my question is, is there, is there an alternative source of funding that would still allow us to accomplish this?
A combination of.
It has been budgeted, I'm sorry. It has been budgeted in the electric fund, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We can use our reserve in the general fund to fund this, if you want. I would also say that we received twenty-six thousand ninety-two dollars from the state of Florida as their portion of share on state highway through Mount Dora for traffic signal maintenance. That money should be transferred out of electric fund if we don't pay for this improvement to the general fund and the balance of the reserves. That's the only way we could do it right now, because it was funded in the CIP for the electric department.
Just real quick on, when you talk about the other part, like I pay through CECO, and, and part of my bill is a ten percent city franchise fee. That's being paid now. Is CECO paying that franchise fee to the city?
Yes.
Okay, so, and so we are, we are paying, other utility people do, we're paying ten percent of our bill is coming in back into the city, you know, through a franchise fee.
Does that go into the electric fund?
Yes. That goes into the general billing.
Goes into the general fund.
Okay. But it's all part of, you know, and I would assume our electric bill goes, our electric will go into electrical, goes into electric fund itself, so that's the only difference on that. But we are helping, it is citywide source of funding though.
I agree. I'm willing to leave to our manager, doing the management decisions of where it should come from. I think he knows more about that than I do, and I respect any decision they make would be proven.
That's why I said we can do it a combination, either one fund or a combination of others, so that's, that's good from there.
Sure. So I think from a, from a, from a technical standpoint, I think the city manager and Mr. Wells were spending a little time with me talking about the electrical and technical part. I have no problem with it. It is, my only problem is from an accounting standpoint, certainly fairness is extremely important, and I'm reminded of that, though, saying there's, there's lies, darn lies and devastations, I'm going to have to add a fourth level of government fund accountants or something, because it doesn't seem right that the money comes out of the electric fund. The interfund transfers and things that we do are suspicious at best, and that's been gracious. And I would have to say that the funding would, in my vision of fair, is to transfer the twenty-six thousand out of the electric fund into the general fund, and then pay the entire amount from the general fund so that all citizens who benefit from it, or all citizens are paying for it, rather than one group more than the other. And I know, you know, in the scheme of things, it doesn't matter a whole lot, but to the extent that everything is done with an eye to fairness, makes me feel better about what I'm doing up here. So that's, if you're looking for motion, that's something that I would support or make. Well, we haven't made a motion yet, so if you want to make a motion to include some of the different things, that's up to you at that point. So, I want to take some more discussion, any other discussion on this? The council, okay, if you want to make a motion.
Okay. I move that we approve the rebuild of the traffic signals with funding coming from the general fund and the movement of the state funds out of the electric fund into the general fund in the amount of twenty-six thousand and change.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Mr. Krall?
Yes. So we have the electric fund, and some households in the community buy franchise agreements and so on, get their electricity from the Mount Dora Electric Utility, and some do not. The salaries, benefits, retirement, contributions, health care, and so on, of the folks associated with the electric utility, and I don't begrudge them any of that, but those are paid by all the citizens.
On the electricity, on the, those are paid for by citizens, they're on the city electric system. The people who are outside the city electric system, such as CECO and Duke Power, they pay a ten percent franchise fee to go back to the general fund.
So, okay, who runs the paychecks for those folks? The city, okay? Who, there are a lot of city costs that are absorbed in there, so I, I, if, if, if this is the way we're going to do things, then believe me, with, from where I sit, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, the only thing that those electric utility funds are going to be used for in the future, is what I'm hearing you say, is for electric utility improvements, et cetera. Nothing else.
No. You're right, that's what they use for, but there's no, there's no rules or no obligations on the, on anybody's part not to loan money from one fund to another fund, and then that gets paid back to that fund. Mr. Shepherd?
That's not, that's not what I'm.
I think we're all getting to my point. And I like how Mr. Shepherd maybe, if you would, maybe clarify, if that, if that's okay.
As far as the electric fund goes, the employees that are in there are paid through that fund. That fund also is, since they don't have a city manager or the chief financial officer or HR, there are allocations back to the electric fund, the water and sewer fund, and the stormwater fund, and the cemetery fund to cover those costs that the general fund is paying for, so they get reimbursed on those allocations. The other, some of the other items we talked, you talked about, there's return on investment that the, the three funds are paying for, and there's a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. Since there are no taxes, it's based on the mileage rate and, and the values that are on their books. So that's how those, those transfers are computed to come in, as well as the allocations. Mayor.
Mr. Olson.
From my standpoint, I fear we're getting into management issues that, people that know far more about where these funds should come from and what's the best interest they see than we council members, none of which, none of whom are CPAs or that I know of are so skilled, as skilled to knowing every part of the nuances as Mr. Shepherd knows of our budget and our allocation issues. I'm, I'm in this dilemma, because I certainly want this to pass, but I don't want to be so presumptuous to think that I know more than, than our manager and our, our financial manager and everybody else that makes those decisions, and I detest intruding into management, you know that, that's one of my things. And so I, I'm in this dilemma.
And just to, if I could first, I think my motion was taking what I understood as, as the appropriate course. So what I, what I'm doing is taking what I think is the right course, but I'm ready to be corrected, you know, so it's okay. So maybe if you, I think, I think what, and I think you're intentional, that was, was correct, but as we got through the discussion on here, it started, and I agree with Mr. Olson, starting to sound too much like micromanagement on our part.
Thank you.
You know, in the area that we don't need to belong into, and. Point of, or if I could just interrupt for a second, we transferred a half a million bucks a couple of months ago out of the general fund.
No, we didn't.
From the CRA. So to drop the micromanagement bond is a little bit.
No, no, I'm not, it's, don't take this personally, jeez, you know?
I just take it personally. This million is, I am, I'm not taking it personally. It is all busy.
Let me have the floor, please. Okay, thank you. Now, you made a good, you made a good recommendation. It was a good solid, it was a good solid motion, okay, that you made. However, going through the discussion and listening to the different discussions, and I'm correct when I'm saying this, so if you don't like the word "micromanagement," that's fine. We are, we're managing an area that we don't need to be managing, we're telling our staff how to take funds out from one fund to another fund. That's not our job to do that. We need to, yes, it looks better if you do it from one area to another area, you go back and forth, you know, the accounting, I understand the accounting thing, and from that standpoint, that, you know, when I was doing a closing on the house, and some people, the people bought some of my furniture, and they says, "We'll just deduct it off of the, off the closing," you know, "What you have to pay?" And I says, "Nope, you will write me a check and I will write you a check." I said, "I want the full accounting on." And I think this is what you're trying to do with this, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, if that's, if that's, you know, you're trying to show this kind of an accounting with this thing, but I think we're into an area where we don't need to be, and, and I don't want to see this, this whole project go down maybe on the kind of some, maybe the possible wording either on it, and.
If this goes the way the management thinks it is, and if I understood Mr. Slaby's motion, then I'm fine with it. My understanding is, we were moving things around outside of what management recommended, and I don't agree with that. So I'm going to vote no unless I know that management is.
I was going to, I want to get a clarification from Mr. Shepherd, based on his exact motion. What is, his motion was, what is.
The opportunity is there for, for the general fund to pay for this? For the last, right or wrong, for the last twelve years that I know of, all those, that particular type of funding has come from the electric fund. If we were to change that now, it's going to require a budget amendment to the general fund, taking the reserves out of the, taking out of the reserves for the eighty-six thousand, we would be able to transfer, we'd have to make another amendment to the electric fund to send the other money from the DOT over to the general fund to cover that. We do have, the general fund does have a streets and roads improvement program in there, where we collect the gas taxes and so forth, and all the monies that we do spend on that, no, it is, the general fund supplements it with other tax money. Okay? It doesn't cover itself, it would have to be supplemented by the general fund, but, yes.
So, so I guess my question is, it was put, it was originally allocated to the electric fund because that's the way we've always done it?
Well, partly, and Charles, Charles is the one who's taken responsibility for that since two thousand and four, when he got here, and I.
that since 2004 when he got here, and I guess because of that, it just kinda, and I'm, I'm just guessing now, it just flowed into that fund.
Well, I'm, I'm more than willing to, I'm perfectly confident that, that staff knows, you know, where, where best to take this money from. My intent on asking the question was, I just want to make sure that we're doing this not because we've always done it that way, but because it was truly the correct pot of money to take it out of as far as, you know, who it benefits, et cetera, so...
I think going forward, we have an opportunity to, to make adjustments.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't discount anything that's been said.
Then I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna support Mr. Slaby then.
Mr. Lineback, you had a...
I was just gonna say that I'm, I'm very fiscally conservative for communities, that's just Mount Door. I don't like, I like to keep at a minimum any budget amendments, any non-budgeted items, that's just my philosophy, and I think it's a good one. My suggestion as an alternative counsel is go ahead as initially proposed and then change it as we're coming up to new budget cycle, if you can do it one more time. The argument I think, or the discussion in regards to applying the cost among ratepayers versus residents is a good one, and I think we can accommodate that in the future through the budget. But again, we don't have a money budget in the general fund, we will have to amend the budget, lower our reserve fund accordingly. If you're willing to do that, we can do that. Either way, it needs to be done. I don't think we can put off the improvements, and we just strongly recommend that we proceed one way or the other, but I, my third alternative is bite the bullet this time, change it properly in the future so we don't have that consideration again.
I agree with the city manager. We're also getting money from the state, and we don't want to mess that up either, so we can make a change, and in any government, however small, you're, you're taking money from one fund to another one, it happens all the time. That's how come we mysteriously get things done. So I think in this case, I'll go with the city manager and I agree with what Mr. Slaby's saying here, but I think at this time, we need to move forward with this.
If we could, if we could change the motion to, I'll gladly withdraw it.
Okay.
Or if that's...
I like, if you agree with that.
I second agrees. I remember the second.
Yes, I agree.
I'm sorry. Okay, you're great.
I second you.
Am I good now?
Yeah, you're good. I'm gonna slap you on the wrist later on.
I move we approve...
We already have the...
Please, Mr. Slaby, I withdrew the motion with the accounting piece in it.
Yeah, I was just in now, motion to, for the accounting.
Okay.
Okay. Initial motion was, yeah, I think...
To approve it.
The thing, yes. And, okay, it's fine?
We good?
Everything good? Anybody from the public wish to comment on this? Mr. Masterson, please.
Wait, well, I don't know whether we have made a motion yet. I withdrew mine.
Jerome, what I...
Okay, you guys are getting me all confused here because you had to say, I thought you were just withdrawing that second part about the funding source, but the initial motion of approval saying...
Maybe I can bring some clarity, it was all one motion, Ms. Slaby. He said, "Mr. Slaby moved to approve rebuild of traffic signals with funding from the general fund and movement of state funds out of the electric fund into the general fund in the amount of 26,000, oh nine two," and Ms. Rich seconded. So it's my understanding that Mr. Slaby just withdrew his entire motion.
Okay, fine. I prefer to do that.
Okay, fine. Okay, then we're good to go. So we're all on that page, so now we need a motion for approval, please?
I move to approve the...
Okay, we got a motion in seconds? Okay. Anybody from the public? Public's already up there.
Mike Masterson, 787 Crossman's Way.
Welcome back to council.
The discussion about robbing Peter to pay Paul, in some essence is what, which I think was the objection, has merit in this regard. I remember the discussion during the water rate increase, that a comment was made, we would not have as large a rate increase going through if we had not depleted the reserves, et cetera, for the water utilities fund, whatever it may have been. And that to get a good bond rating, we had to rapidly replenish that money so we could have a good, we could get a good rate. I think the objection is being raised, is a point of, for lack of a better term, point of order. Folks, we need to have better budgeting practices and robbing Peter to pay Paul practice, avoid the robbing Peter to pay Paul practices. If we don't have the money in one fund, we can't borrow it from it and then end up writing it off, but, and that is the danger that I think we need to avoid, and if we have to put our foot down and say, "This is the right way to do it," on an accounting basis, because accountants get audited, and the auditors will come back and say, "Don't think I would have approved that." At some point in time, we gotta stop doing things wrong because they're convenient. That's my, my comment.
Thank you for that.
And I have stayed in a lot of Holiday Inns and Marriotts, et cetera, so I can speak from some knowledge. Like 2,000.
Okay. My name is Sandy Steinberg, I live at 802 North Grandview Street, Mount Door, Florida, and all day I've been practicing a speech to let you know how many times I've been out in that road playing ping pong with cars, and it's no fun, and it's very, very dangerous. We have an audible indicator there that's there to help me cross the street, and it almost kills me every time I use it. So I'm, I'm really glad that you people have decided to, to fix this problem, and for all the people that are silent, pad and blind, we thank you very much.
Thank you for that, please. Anybody else in the public wish to comment?
Rose Ann Abado, 541 East First Avenue. I agree 100% this needs to be done, and I'm glad you all are doing it, because I've almost, wasn't you, Mr. Mayor, but I almost ran over somebody taking a left off Donnelley onto Fifth, and somebody's crossing, because, and we don't know who has the right of way, so now I'm so alert there, it takes me five minutes to get through the intersection, I'm scared I'm gonna run over somebody. I have a question, and I don't even know if, if we know an answer. I know Ms. Tillot has raised the issue before about the Fifth and Grandview. Is, are we just fixing the light to continue to be a red-yellow blinking, or is that gonna be a stop and go?
I don't think Fifth and Grandview is not part of this equation. This is Alexander and Fifth, which also has an audible indicator, and Donnelley and Fifth.
Oh, I thought it said Grandview and Fifth on the agenda, then I misunderstood.
Yeah, I don't think it has any, I'm, I'm trying to get a crosswalk across Grandview and Fifth, but that's a whole separate issue.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought we were addressing that now, and you're right, that needs to be addressed, because when we first moved here...
I'm working on it.
We'd laughed about, oh, the Mount Door traffic, there's three cars going by on Fifth, now the, it's way more than that and it's gonna get worse, so that's great. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. Anybody else? Back to council, Mr. Slaby, you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, can I respond to the Grandview situation? No, let's do what, let's do what we have.
Thank you.
So, it's a great light, great idea, but just because it's a great idea, you can't, you know, there's laws of man and laws of accounting, and it, it's gotta be funded the proper way, so I'm gonna vote against it. I voted for street sweepers to go, or, you know, pushed for street sweepers to go into other parts of town, because those folks paid for them, they deserved it, and the people who get the light should pay for it, the accounting is not correct, so I'm gonna vote against it.
Anybody? I'm gonna...
We'll say this didn't pass. How long would it take for us to get this thing rectified then down the road? Next budget cycle?
Yes, we'll start, you'll start probably in May, June, thereabouts, and all that will be before, and we'll make sure that it's included.
Okay, I...
In the general fund, excuse me.
I agree with us needing to fix this, get the funding right, but I think the citizen's safety comes first, and I think we need to vote to, to get this done in a timely manner, and we will fix the budget thing, that's why we have budget meetings. And I think all together collectively with the city and us, we will get that straightened out without a problem.
Any other comments? Can we vote, Ms. Johnson, please?
Yes, Ms. Tillot?
Yes.
Mr. Raffelson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaby?
No.
Mr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Krayle?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Jerome?
Yes.
Okay, that's done. Thank you. City attorney update. Just a couple of quick things. The motion of the plaintiff for summary judgment in the Medallion Home case was argued last Tuesday. The judge took it under deponent, and I have not been advised of any ruling yet. It may take a while, you never know, judges do what they want to do. And the only other thing I have is to say thank you to the city clerk and her misty for coordinating train, which is gonna occur sometime, and we appreciate that everybody worked together to schedule that. And that's all I've got tonight. Appreciate a lot of those newsletters and everything you send us, and I had to set up a whole separate folder in my email just to, just to take care of them, so I can find them in the future.
Mayor, is this time that I may address our city attorney?
Well, it's, this is, his update, and you can ask him a question at this point, that'd be great. Good time to do it.
Okay, yeah, about, I'm not going to the emails, but I did notice about the city charter. Is there a reason why, in one of your emails, you, you sent us the city charter, which we had reviewed back in 2015? So I'd like to know why the city charter was brought to our attention again?
During my introductory meetings with several of you, there was questions asked, I was gonna be looking at the city charter anyway, there was question about whether the election changed, what it did, several of you, we talked about it, and so I just set, did an analysis and provided, and I'm providing it to you.
Did somebody ask you to do this?
Several, several of the council members, the mayor I talked to, the mayor about questions about the charter, I talked to Councilman McCray about the charter, and I think several of y'all also had questions about the charter, so if you have a new city manager recruitment process, it'd be helpful for a new city manager, or those who are interested in the position to, to have a, a valuation of what the charter says, so...
So in other words, the council people couldn't look at the charter themselves and ask you the questions? Because, I mean, it was a long email about the charter, and I know, like Mr. Slaby, he was on the charter review last year, and I just, I mean, answer me this, did we pay you to do that? Was that charged us to do that?
I haven't billed for it yet.
So you're having the taxpayers spend money for your time to do a charter that was already reviewed last year?
No, ma'am, it's not, it's not the same thing. It's, fresh set of eyes, looking at the city charter is part of a transition, I think it'll be helpful to look at it. There was good questions asked on my meetings, we haven't had a chance to meet yet, but there in the meetings I had, there was good questions asked, and I think there's no random answer, a great number of those questions, plus provide some other benefits for the city in terms of a new city manager recruitment process, and, and, and other issues are discussed and that I think will be helpful to the city.
So my question is, are we going to be billed for that? The taxpayers have to pay for your time doing that? That it's already been reviewed last year and then we're doing it again?
Let me answer this question directly. I'm not working for free, okay? And so, you know, the city manager's not working for free, I don't know whether any of your city employees are working for free, so yes, you will be billed. I think if you look at the invoices, particularly the first invoice was discounted by 50%. You'll see a great number, a great deal of time in the second invoice, it was discounted in this courtesy time.
Well, I can't believe that long email, which took you some time, you're gonna bill us, and just for some questions that the council could have looked on the city charter that anybody can see?
Well, I'm not gonna argue with you, I disagree that it's just a matter of reading the charter. I think there's some analysis in there that a fresh set of eyes that have been reviewing city and county charters have written several charters, have gone to the legislature and had several charters passed, I think that the analysis will be helpful.
It wasn't analysis, it was...
Ms. Rich, please, she's answered the questions and...
Not to my satisfaction.
Well, then, please have a private conversation with Mr. Groot then, okay?
Don't you think the constituents should hear this? Whether taxpayers' money's...
You already asked the questions, you gave him an answer, and anything further, please address him privately.
As a taxpayer myself, I don't like spending money on something that doesn't need to be done. I'm sorry, I have constituents...
As a point of order, I gotta, if Ms. Rich has some questions, I don't understand why she can't have them answered, now.
I'll answer any questions that are asked. Okay, go ahead, feel free. Is the rest of council agreement on that letter?
I think he answered the question.
That's what I feel, and I'm gonna rule, and, and I think that she answered the questions, and any future questions at this point, please call Mr. Groot and get your, your answers to him and take the time to, to address your questions. He did an analysis, he did an analysis, he says he's billing for it, and that's, and that's your question. And whether it's right or wrong in your mind, that's, that's, that's fine. And, but he is billing for the analysis, it was, I felt, I read the analysis, I felt it was a very good analysis that he provided, it was something that I think that we need to look at in any future charter review committee, who's, who's assigned by this council, has a very good foundation to go with in the future, and when they have to review the, the charter, to make amendments to the charter, it need to be done.
So it sounds like you asked for that review comment?
No, I did not. You know, don't put, you know, things out there that aren't true.
I'm just asking a question.
Okay, you, you, that wasn't a question, that was, that was a comment that I...
No, I asked you, were you the one that asked for that charter?
Nobody asked for it, okay? We all discussed...
You said some of the council members did.
No, nobody asked for an analysis, no. It's my, I am asking a question to Mrs., Mrs. Rich right now, please, okay? A mentioned that everybody in this room that, that interviewed the different, the different attorneys, and we asked different questions, and we talked about the different processes, okay? There was questions that were each asked, he turned around and wrote a, an analysis based on the questions that were asked, not any direct comments from anybody on this council that I'm aware of, who asked Mr. Groot to do an analysis for him.
Yeah, 'cause I never saw anything that anyone was asking for an analysis.
Okay, Mr. Groot, end of, end of discussion on this, please.
Part of Mr. Groot's coming to Mount Door during the transition time would be to read the charter.
He saw.
So he was supposed to go through everything to get up to speed, and if there's an issue, it, it would be good to be brought to our attention. So I think Mr. Groot did the right thing. I did not go through the analysis, but I think that's part of his job on coming on board, just, just like a city manager getting up to speed. So it's one of these things where there's a lot to go through, a lot to learn, and if he could help us in the process, thank you.
My comment is that, that I read this analysis in detail, and it actually provided some clarification on some of the wording that we have, and there are some, there could be interpretations of the different texts that's used, anyway, I thought it was quite helpful.
You mean that all the words were together and not put spaces in between?
Mine came across perfectly, perfectly well. I have no issues with reading the, the attachment at all.
Well, I'm just prepared for grammar and professionalism.
Mrs. Rich, Mrs. Rich, please.
See, I have a right to express...
Yeah, but you know what, you know, having a right to speak is one thing, but having a right to sit here and criticize alternatives...
I'm not criticizing, I'm doing something.
Please, talk to him personally.
Why do you always talk to me this way, Mayor? I take offense to the way you talk to me. You always do whatever you must.
I'll bite my tongue, okay. Is there any other comments about the city attorney's update, or anything else for the city attorney to address to us? Okay, fine, city manager's update, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, we have talked about a goal-setting session. I made contact with the University of Central Florida, Florida Institute of Government, Marilyn Cradie specifically, and she is willing and able to accommodate your desires if you, if you want to proceed. So first of all, I'd like, it'd be about a day session. By the time everything is set up and lunch and so forth, it'll be a full day. So if you'd like to proceed, I told her I'd call in the morning and work on, on times for you. Again, it could be during the day, it can be on a Saturday she's willing to do it, whatever your pleasure is, we'll, we'll meet your needs.
I agree to do that.
I think, yeah, I think Saturdays will probably be, my own personal, I think Saturday's better for some people, need to work and other things that we have during the week, and if we can do a Saturday, so if Mrs. Cradie can give you some Saturday days, and you can have Ms. Elder send out another Doodle alert to us, that'd be...
Fine with me.
She'll have a little different name than Doodle, but her appointment, whatever it's called.
Calendar.
On this issue, any day is, is fine. I think we're way behind on planning, so I'm okay with any time. I mean, my, my only stipulation, if, if there was such a thing, would be is, can we do it in the next week? Can we do it in the next 10 days? Can we do it in the next 10 days? You know, I don't want to make...
I have some dates actually, um, from her tentative dates off.
Yeah, go throw out all the dates to, uh, Ms. Elder and then she's available and then we'll get them out and we'll do what we can at the earliest possible time because I think Mr. Slavy's correct there, we've been something that we've been looking to do and I think, uh, um, councils in the past have, um, not, um, I think addressed appropriately in the past either, so, and I think Mr. Wilson and Ms. Rich, you can kind of agree with that, you know?
Absolutely. I hope that would include, uh, Mr. Pastu's swat... Mr. Pastu's swat analysis and all of that and that because he spent a lot of time putting that together. It was impressive to me and that'd be part of goal setting anyway, so I'm assuming all of that stuff will be blended together. It'll be a great experience.
Not sure how it works in there, but yes, I'm sure whatever resources that she's going to do to help us in, in our goals and I would assume, I make an assumption, I usually get wrong when I make assumptions sometimes, that the, uh, staff will be involved in, um...
The directors of town.
Yes, okay, good. So, which is going to be a good thing. So, we have them there and we're going to get a lot of feedback in all the different areas that we need to do. So, you arrange that?
I'll do it as, as soon as I can get it done.
Okay. Anything else on the city manager update?
That's on me, thank you.
Okay. Real quick, if you, if you wouldn't mind on yours, uh, could you comment on the, what we, we talked about the lights, would you comment a little bit more about the, um, the Fifth Street, um, repair process and how it's going to blend in with the, with the traffic lights also?
Yes, as I, I think we've mentioned in the past, we've been working with the county on, um, on Fifth Avenue, right, uh, county, uh, road, roadway. We're in discussions as to initially some improvements from Tremaine to Alexander, to have the county and perhaps the city participate as a means of expediting this because it is a main thoroughfare and is in rough shape, to bring it up to mill it and to pave it and bring it up to a, a minimum standard for us. Uh, we've had a little bit of, um, debate about ownership and, uh, timing of that and timing the whole dedication of the road if you so desire within our boundaries. So, I anticipate at your next meeting to have a proposed agreement, interlocal agreement ready to go and, um, uh, get this done as soon as possible. Uh, and I understand that, um, the downtown area's been disrupted in the past, if you will. We're talking to them about maybe night work or something that can be done as expeditiously as possible and minimize impact upon all our residents, corporate and otherwise.
Yeah, the, um, discussion, or those discussions about night work and if they have crews working at night, that can be brought over to work at night, they can do that, but, uh, right now they're looking at doing things on the, uh, possibly on, uh, get it done over weekend, um, which will probably end up getting done when we start getting into the, uh, in, in the June, July timeframe when they have crews out there working also and we have a very slow time, or slower time in the city. So, um, so we want to impact, um, our, our streets and, uh, because we made that very clear to them, we don't want to do the major milling and, um, or anything that's going to, um, involve the infrastructure at this point. That'll be two to three years out before anything like that would happen.
I'm meeting with the county manager next Monday.
Right, he'll be back.
I think that's great. I, I support having our manager and Mr. Peters and those that are involved actively involved and expeditiously involved in looking at, at every stage. Good.
Being done, okay. Come, uh, council comments, strike down this end if you like and...
Good.
Ms. Rich?
Yes, I'd like to talk about when I wasn't here about the dumbing down of the city manager requirements. I totally would like to bring it back about that because I really think a master's degree is very important for our city manager. So, I'd like to see if I can, we can bring it back.
Well, it was voted on and the only way it can be reconsidered, they can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, for reconsideration would be somebody from the affirmative.
Affirmative, but if the person has not voted, they can, they can, they can motion to reconsider.
Right, which Mr. Wilson and I both were not at the meeting, so I would like more discussion on it.
I, um, we can, um...
What it would take is a motion to reconsider. I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
What it would take is a motion to reconsider, the motion be seconded, then you would vote on whether or not to reconsider and then if you voted to reconsider, that would only be on what, the reconsideration, then you make a decision on the, on the, the decision that was made after that, so.
Can I make a motion now?
And does the, the motion to reconsider require a second? I, you know, I think it does under Roberts. Then you all...
It does.
And is there's a discussion on a reconsideration motion? Do would you know? Uh, I know you have your... There's, there is discuss, that's, I'm trying to think on my, uh, little cheat sheet. Think that motion's debatable, that's a debatable motion as I recall. That's a debatable motion.
Can I make a motion to reconsider?
Is this, um, again, now since we're, we're, uh, we're in city council comments, it'd be an appropriate time to do this or how we do this? Again, I just want to make sure we're going by the book for everything and, and if you, excuse me on that, um, make sure if you're that, you know, make sure you get it in there properly.
Okay.
That, that's an issue, Mr. Leibach and I are planning on discussing sometime soon. Your practice is to allow motions at council comments time. I think that needs to be looked at, so.
Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion.
Could, could you, you hold that just a second, would you please? Let me have some other comments sent from the council, some other things and then come back to that.
Okay.
So, make sure...
Got it.
Okay, thanks. Is there any other council comments at this point for any people?
That they could be here.
Go ahead, but, um, thank you. Well, everybody is very free, including myself, to be critical and I have some very positive thank you comments to share that a neighbor of mine has taken the time to even type out and give to me and it, it concerns, uh, among Mr. Peters department head's line manager, Josh Cram. My neighbor was, was concerned about the, the quality of his water and he asked, he called Mr. Peters office and asked his, asked for some help and Mr. Cram came out and my neighbor had glowing remarks for his courtesy, his attentiveness, and I want to read a very short note at my neighbor's request, says that, "Thank you." "Cal Roffson, the young man we spoke to about last night is Josh Cram. He truly went above and beyond in making sure that I was comfortable with his finding and returned later that afternoon with further information concerning my issue. Our conversations, he stated, in our conversations, he stated, 'Working for the city right out of high school and now in his present position, he feels that the water system is his and that all of his patrons deserve the very best. We homeowners of Mount Door should be proud of people like Josh who are looking out for our best interest and those of the whole city, Lee Swink, St. James Way. So, I compliment Mr. Peters for the good judgment from all of them." That's a good point, uh, thank you. Uh, I'd like to have this, uh, added to the record if I wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind. We should have positive things in. But thank you, John.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a variety of things, um, and about agenda items for future agendas and I just want to lay them out there and then the board at their pleasure can decide what to do with them. They are the city manager search. I think it's important for us before we actually get into the interviews and hiring is that we work with our, our director, city manager, if, if, you know, you guys so inclined. But all these things I'm talking about are for things to discuss at a future meeting. That's all, I don't want to decide it now, just want to, the idea is that I want to put on the agenda, the idea of putting a reporting package together so that the candidate that is, um, ultimately selected, he or she can see, these are the types of things that we as a city like to see and would, would they, you know, when taking the job, geez, can I, can I provide this sort of thing? And then also we as a group, um, within the confines of our charter, um, develop the success measures so that when we hire the person, we can say, and at the end of your first year, we're going to say you do a good job if, and then we kind of lay that out ahead of time so that during the interview process, at least this is the way I operate in hiring people, here's the deal, at the end of the first year, person, I'm going to eyeball you and say, "Did you do this, this and this?" And it's not fair of me to rate you on these three things without first telling you, these are the three things I'm going to rate you on. So, I think it's important that we put it on the agenda before we get too far. Can discuss that. The second thing I wanted to mention, uh, a couple that can wait, I think, for our planning session is about transparency and, and, um, campaign reports and things going on the, on the website. I'll leave that for later. Same thing with the citizen survey, I think that can wait for the other one. The last one is standards. I, I would like to put on the agenda for another meeting, our discussion of maybe asking our CRA, our, our necro board and our parks and recs departments, or, um, advisory boards, rather, to help us develop standards. Um, and, and there's different types of standards and there's depth of standards. So, I, I went to, um, Florida League of Cities, didn't get much help. I went to this good thing called Google and found a ton of stuff on cities across the country that have standards. Now, I'm not talking about how to run the department to, to Mr. Roffson's point, you know, of telling someone, "You have to mow the grass every so many days" or "How many square acres someone should be able to mow." But just the idea that we as citizens, when we go through the budget process, say that a fence will be painted free of rust, that sidewalks will be free of debris or whatever it is, so that when we are making our budgetary decisions, we can measure against that. So, same thing when we go to the parks and rec department and say, "We need this," well, then you can say, "Well, I need three more people if you want that." And then we might say, "Well, maybe we don't want that." Then, but we can't, we can't hold anyone accountable without a standard. So, I just feel like our advisory boards can help us identify what is, um, an acceptable standard. And anyone can go around and look at a certain park bench or something and, and decide, but I think we should put as an agenda item whether or not we want to ask them to do that for us or with us. And those are the only two things. The other thing I'd like to sometime get on the budget or on the agenda which might go through this planning is more discussion on the innovation district, but I think that actually can wait. So, just those two items were, um, about the manager, hiring them as standards and then just general, um, city property standards. Would, I'd like to see if you'd like to put them on a future agenda. A, a soon future agenda.
I like, I like to think on the, real quick on the goals and objectives, which you're talking about for a city manager, you know, working against goals. This is what the idea was, bringing up this goals and objectives workshop so we can have this, um, the different goals that the whole, the city council, our staff is all buying into so then we go out to the future city managers or inform Mr. Leibach that we have something to gauge by because this has always been a downside. Even when I look at the, at the past evaluations I had to do with the city managers, it was really, the, the city manager did his own goals and, um, and which is nice, but, you know, anybody's going to set a goal that they definitely can't achieve. If they don't, then they're not too bright at that point to start with. But you should set goals that you can achieve, that are achievable goals and, uh, but I think the kind of things you're looking at, is, I think, the same thing I'm looking at is to have a, a broad range of goals that, uh, that we can measure the city manager and the, and, and that the city manager then can turn around and to evaluate his staff accordingly because we're, everybody's looking at the same goals and objectives and if we're all meeting those things, it's good to go. Uh, and the standards, I think it's good because there's a lot of people, and, and I took a while to straighten out what you're talking about with the standards, but, um, and, and I like the idea, when people come in, they want to donate a park bench, they want to donate, uh, they want to donate a, a bike rack, donate a tree, donate whatever. And are these, uh, assumed as some kind of standards that you're talking about that we establish?
Just whatever, I mean, I walk by and I see something with rust on it, so that is below my standard for a city property. You know, it should always have it, but I assume there's not enough staff or paint in the budget to cover that. Well, then we either have to decide that rust is okay or that we're going to spend the money to, to take care of it.
Okay, that's good. Let's see. Any best work, I'm going to get to you, let me get to you. Still got mine there.
But if you, if the board's pleasures to dump that all into the, the planning session, that's fine too. Um, I just was trying to carve out some things that I want, that are important.
We, um, I do get a chance to talk with him, so I'm back about the, about the, the agendas and, um, and the different things that we talk about here and to make sure that we try to get some of these things included in, um, in the agendas as we go down, as we go down the road with the agenda. So, um, he's got the notes, I got the notes, so hopefully we can get them and, um, get those things included.
Real quick, then maybe I'd rather make a motion than to, that it be included. I mean, 'cause I, I just, I mean, it took us six months to get to, Slavy wanted to move tables and we almost spent eighteen thousand dollars. So, while I come off as a little, um, abrupt, is that we're six months into the, my, my first year, so we're 25% done and I'd like to make sure things get on the agenda because we, we got to get them done. And so, we can vote no, but, um, is there any consensus to get these things on the agenda now or would we prefer...
What you say now, what are you talking about, like next, next meeting?
No, the next meeting, 'cause I mean...
You're talking about setting up standards though and that's...
No, no, all I was asking was to discuss whether we want to ask these committees to, to do that work for us, to get the ball rolling.
That seems like a planning issue to me. I don't mind doing it next meeting, but it seems to me that would be a 10, 11 o'clock meeting if we all want to weigh in on things new, de novo, brand new. Um, and it might take some leadership by our manager and perhaps our city attorney and others to, to deal with that. Uh, and I am, I'm not, I totally support the idea, I'm just thinking it may not be a, a good agenda item, but a planning issue. That's, I don't, either way, but...
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Isn't it the mayor who puts things on the agenda?
No, no, I, I'm, I'm part of the process. It, most of the items come from agenda, come from staff. And I look at them and, um, we, we sit down before the agenda is published and we review the agenda. No, it's not my job to put them on the, on the agenda. And, um, I do have a good recommendation being mayor, I do have the, you know, that strong, but this council has more power from that standpoint if there's, and like Mr. Slavy said, if there's things, uh, specific things that you want on the agenda, um, it's just like, uh, was a couple last, at the last meeting, it was the last meeting or the meeting before where we set a, um, a June timeframe to come back with a presentation for that. That's, those are the kind of things that, that's, set a date, some, some, very, something specific that we can get on the agenda, set a date for it, um, with enough time for our staff to do things, but don't burden our staff, you know, to have an item that you want to put on the agenda that's going to burden our staff unduly with all the other work that they have to do because as we know right now, uh, we are limited with staff and, uh, they're constantly asking us to, to hire more people and we keep saying we're frugal and, um, we're going to have to do without, so.
Mr. Mayor, but this may help. I've been to several Marilyn Crowde...
I can hear you.
Did I do it again?
I'm sorry.
I've been to several Marilyn Crowde visioning sessions and everything except the city manager selection process that you mentioned should draw out of you. That, that'll be part of what she will be drawing out to, to discuss and vision and prioritize and all that.
I'm fine, then I'm fine with waiting on it.
Okay, that'd be good? Well, if I see how that, how that process works out and then we can pull it in from there. Um, just real quick, I just want to mention we're coming into the budget time and the different things we're going to be talking about and just something for, um, for the council members to start thinking about. There's been, um, if you've been reading the newspaper lately, the Waikama Parkway has been, um, started, they, uh, they, they started the, the end, the, the one part of the Waikama and, uh, it's going to reach our doorstep in 18 to 19 months, okay? And that's their, that's their building schedule on that. Um, it's something that I think we looked at, uh, from the 2019, possibly 2020. Um, there was monies that were granted to the state from the federal government that , uh, expedited their process and they are moving very quickly to finish, um, the, the portion of it. So, uh, we need to, as a council, start, um, thinking about our ground plan, what we need to do as far as the, uh, the infrastructure we're looking at for that area along with the possibility of, and we talked about before, about an economic development director to maybe handle some of the, the, the things that are going to come along our way with this, uh, Parkway being built. of the, the things that are going to come along our way with this Parkway being built. And, and we can sit here with blinders or whatever, but it's going to happen, and it's whether or not the, the city of Mount Door wants other cities who are anxious to take the lead, or do we want to, since it's on our doorstep, and we take the lead and do the things that we want to do. So food for thought on that. There's, and as council members, and you got same emails, same emails that I received about our water rate structure, and when you look into some of the things, there's, I think we all have some additional questions about our water rate structure that maybe, that we didn't think about at, at the time when it went through. Some, again, we want to think about and look at that and address some questions into, if you have any more questions, address them into Mr. Lineback, so he can get some answers on them. I mentioned a couple of things to him earlier, and maybe we can start looking at, anyway, with that, Ms. Rich.
Yes. Can I make my motion?
You can do it, however you like, right now.
Okay. I would like to reconsider the qualifications for our new city manager to have a master's degree.
I like Mr. Slavy, I'll second it for purposes of discussion, but I may not vote for it.
Okay, so we have a motion second, and it's open for discussion. And I'll, I'll let, Ms. Rich made the motion, I'll let her, she refers to you, talk about it.
Right. I just think we need to keep our standards in our beautiful city of Mount Door very high, and I think he or she who has master's degree, not, you know, eliminating four degrees or like a two degree that I have, but there are people on staff that have master's, master's degrees, so it would just raises our standard, and I just, I'm really passionate about having that as our city manager.
Okay, appreciate that. Ms. Ralston?
I totally support the concept of having a master's degree as a minimum qualification. Running city government is not only experientially complex, but educationally complex, and citizens of Mount Door deserve the best, not something less than that. That does not mean, of course, that somebody that doesn't have a master's degree, doesn't have the skills that somebody who has a master's degree might have. We all know that time in the saddle is very valuable as well. My problem with reconsidering this is, my understanding is that Mr. Slavy, Slaven, Slavy and Slaven, that's too close. Mr. Slaven has already sent that out, it's now public, and I know, or I assume, that if master's candidates are interested, we can certainly put them at the top of the list in terms of that, when we, when we do our matrix and when we consider the interviews. I'm more concerned about, this is speaking to this issue, but on another, another attack, I'm more concerned about the consideration of requiring residency. If the goal was to, to try to, you're worried about, the council was expressing, members of the council were worried about making sure we could attract as many people as possible. And then, if you, if you wanted to get, if you wanted to attract the Eustace manager, and he's willing to do, you think he's going to sell his home and move it here and take his kids out of school? I don't think that's going to happen. I just think that was a unnecessary, I don't mean this negatively, but inappropriate criteria to put in there to attract, if you really want a lot of people, to consider this. That's going to shut off a lot of people, and I think that will be more serious than the manager issue. But having said that, I certainly support that. I was disappointed to see that reduced in its educational quality, but I am confident this council can deal with that issue. We have a manager here that has skills that can help, and we have Mr. Slaven that is there to help give us guidance and make recommendations on all the things that he did before. We heard three applicants when Mr. Pastu was hired, I don't think we'll reach that level this time, but I hope we do. But my comments are more on the other one than on the master's degree, because I think we'll have master's candidates, and it does not preclude master's candidates from applying, so.
My comment is that, well, I voted both to have the minimum requirement of a master's degree eliminated. Not, not saying that, that no master's degrees will be, you know, considered, but that, that having that as a minimum qualification, I agree that that would probably lessen our field and make our field more narrow. I don't really understand the, the brouhaha over the city manager requirement to live in the city limits. The last two city managers, that was, that was a requirement for both of those, and I don't, so I don't really understand why the, the discontent with that, keeping that--
Everybody in the audience, please allow the council to make their comments. If you disagree, you know, if there's a motion later, and we're going, we have a motion, you have a comment, please try to watch, you know, how you're expressing your remarks out there, and keep them to yourself, please, thank you.
So that was my understanding, that the last two city managers that were hired by the city, it was a requirement for them to live in the city limits, so we're just perpetuating that, that requirement.
I think the people that submit their application to Mr. Slaven will boast about their master's degree, and they will probably towards the top of the selection list. But you can't buy experience. A master's degree would be nice, but you can't buy experience. We will take the master's degree in consideration, like we do everything else. But I don't think that we need to have that in there as a limiter. I think we need it as an inclusion to help that person out, if, if the person that we select does have a master's degree. Again, you can't buy experience.
Mr. Crowell? At our last meeting, I voted in the minority to oppose eliminating the master's degree requirement, but I was outvoted, and, and it's done. And I, I think, I think we should go with, with the decision that's been made. I, I agree that as each of us bank our top candidates later on down the line, certainly education will be a consideration that, that I'll have, and, and others will as well. But I just, I don't want to go back. We seem to revisit these things over and over and over again, and, and I just believe that a vote was taken, I lost in that vote, but we need to move on.
May I make a comment, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Well, I understand, Mr. Crowell.
Address it to the whole council, just another conversation.
Okay, I understand, but I was, sit that night, and Mr. Ralston was out, and it was a very, very important vote, and I don't understand why we couldn't have waited till the next council to make that decision. So I hope, if your decision is to have someone with a master's, that you would support the motion. Thank you.
And as far as that not being, and I appreciate you making the, the motion, the reconsideration motion, with the, and it was my job last meeting to maybe hold that one off and to bring that at a future date, so, so you two could have had that opportunity to vote. Also, that's my fault, and I'll take full responsibility for that. And the motion was made in second, so the vote had to be taken at that point, and nobody made a motion for a deferment at that, you know, from there, so the vote went on at that point. But it's something, maybe if, you know, with some foresight on that, before a motion was made, we could have, you know, we could have deferred that to another date, and again, that's my fault on that. However, the, the master's thing is, I think, has been explained very well, you know, why, and it's, and it's not a dumbing down. We're, we're going to be looking for highly qualified people, and a master's degree, and like I said last time, you can have a master's degree in just about anything in the world, you can get master's degrees, but is it appropriate? Is a master's degree in sociology, is a master's degree in some other kind of field appropriate? We're looking for a person who's got the administrative type needs that we have in the city, so is an MBA type degree more preferable than some other kind of degree? So I think we addressed that pretty well, and it's not dumbing down, we're not dumbing down anything on that. The city, the residency requirement, both votes, by the way, were split for each thing. The residency requirement, I agree 100% with Mr. Ralston's analysis, and that was the reason why I voted against that also, because basically, because we can't, we're, there is people in the area, when your first requirement is the, that you have to live in the city limits. There's a lot of people who are assistant city managers nearby, who are qualified city managers nearby, and, and see that, they, they can still apply if they wanted to, but knowing that that's a definite requirement, you're probably not going to get those, those resumes coming in to you. We can, I would assume, we have the right, if they did apply for the process, knowing that we have that requirement, and we were to select them, and they were nearby within, let's say, a 20-mile distance or so, we probably have the, the ability as a council to waive that requirement for, for a person if we wanted to. So, but to get, but the problem, when it's on that qualification sheet, it limits, it limited that, so that was my reason for, for my vote on that, and I addressed that with some other people also. But, but as far as the reconsideration, it's, well, if we're all going with the comments, um--
Let me, let me ask a question as a manager, please.
Yes.
This has gone out, Mr. Lineback, this has already gone out, and it's been published nationally, I take it?
Yes. Mr. Slaven's firm was contacted immediately after the last council meeting, because it had really gone out a few days before, but not as you changed it at the last city council, or the prevailing council members. So it was amended immediately the day after, it's now been published, and I get the International City Management Association letter, it's in there, it's been published now for a couple weeks. It's twice now.
I think we're committed.
Go ahead.
So I just have a couple of comments. One, you know, I think some of our stumble, which I was a big part of, it deals with our agenda and our ability to bring things up in a way that's most helpful to the organization, so what you can lend us to help us would be helpful, if it's Ms. Crowley or whatever. Attendance, those familiar with the Wisconsin legislature know that you can create a problem by not showing up, so my view is always, whoever's here, you know, we got the city's work to do, and if once we've got a quorum, you know, things will get worked on. Me, push through, you know, I'm going to miss a couple of meetings this summer, pick that night to push through all the things that I hate, you know? That's fine, that's fair. And, and as far as the dumbing down, just know that I was consistent, either consistently brilliant or consistently the opposite, in that I wanted to cast a wide net. I'm not selecting or voting to select this evening, the city manager, I merely wanted to, in case of having a, a choice of 100, to have a choice of 110. And by reducing the requirement of not having to have a master's degree, you then bring in possibilities of more people to look at. And then by vote, and by common sense, it would seem that it's reasonable to think that a person with a master's degree would have a leg up on other candidates, but it's not a certainty. And that's the only reason why I brought it up, which is similarly with the requirement for the city manager to live inside the city, just to cast a wider net. So just know that, that's my motive to do it, and that's all I have to say.
Since this is a reconsideration motion, this is a council's prerogative on this one, I don't think we need to go to the, the public for input on this one. This is going to be our vote solid, whether we want to reconsider or not, so any other comments from the council on this, on this motion?
Fine. I got it right this time, I pushed the right button.
There you go.
Actually, the, under the new controlling Florida law, anytime you make a decision, the public should have the opportunity to speak. So this is a decision.
I'm sorry, public, and, and we will have open to the public for our reconsideration, reconsideration motion.
Res. Ann Abada, 541 East First Avenue in Mount Door. I didn't have a problem with the language when it was a master's or equivalency, because that's where you get the experience. And so, I'm not as troubled by the master's degree, because you all are going to get all kinds of applications, you're going to look at them, and you're going to rate them accordingly. But I have major concerns with the requirement for living in the city, and I think Renee was saying that this was not a requirement before, they may have lived here, but it was not a requirement. I don't know that for a fact, but I don't believe it's been a requirement that they live here. And I have serious concerns about casting a wide net, because there are a whole lot of reasons that people legitimately could not move into this city, and therefore we could lose the best two or three or four candidates. And if we can make a motion to raise the, the master's degree issue, then I'm thinking, since I remember exactly what the vote was, that there might be four to three to, if somebody made a motion to get rid of that residency thing, because I know the mayor and Mr. Slavy voted against that requirement the last time. I'm thinking, having heard what Mr. Ralston said, and I think what Ms. Rich thinks, that would be four to get rid of that, so I'm just throwing that out, if somebody wants to make that motion.
So we can keep making motions to get the vote, what everybody wants here, I mean, how does this work?
Okay, unfortunately, the, fortunately, unfortunately, how we run, look at things--
Can I amend it?
No, one, one second. And the, we have an issue here, where under normal circumstances, if we were all present at the meeting, okay, the prevailing side would be the one to make a reconsideration motion, okay? So with that, if somebody's voted for something, they're not going to make a reconsideration to do something, so that would have been, probably never even been discussed, would be happening. The fact that you weren't here allows either one of you two to make that reconsideration motion, based on what the attorney told us tonight, and so we're allowed to go that way, so that's why we're doing it. So it's not, this isn't a normal type, type thing, when you do a reconsideration motion, but under the circumstances, since they weren't here and allowed to do it, that can happen. So now, since we're all here, somebody, anybody in the affirmative then can ask for a reconsideration motion on that. But, but again, with all the, you know, things published, you know, where does, where does that go? But anyway, that's, that's basically what, why we're doing it, so it's nothing that we're, yeah, we're coming up in reconsideration and, you know, this and that, and we're going to constantly be rethinking ourselves, and I don't want to get involved in that either, in trying to reconsider, but she's one of the legal rights to ask for a reconsideration motion. And you had a comment also.
Could I amend that motion?
Since we do things on an informal basis, yes.
Well, actually, Mr. Mayor, I think the issue there is, on a motion to reconsider, it has to be directed to a specific vote, and it can't be merged. So you can make a second motion to reconsider on the residency, but you need to vote on the--
This one, we'll have to vote on this--
Oh, so we have to do another one after this?
Yes, this is a separate motion, so we're, that's--
Got it.
Thank you for that clarification on that, appreciate that. Okay, and so with that, we have a vote on the reconsideration motion for the masters, the, I guess, to reinstate the masters portion of it.
Yes. Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Ralston?
Yes.
Mr. Slavy?
No.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Crowell?
No.
Mr. Roulette?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
No. Okay. Since we're still in council comments, any other council comments?
I'm moving, I'm moving reconsider the action by which we established a residency requirement for the city manager's application.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider that. Any other, Mr. Crowell?
Yeah. This may be legal, but this isn't right. Everybody knew when the meeting was. We, some meetings we're able to attend, some meetings we're not, I know there'll be meetings that I will miss, but the decision was discussed and taken, and I don't believe that we should--
Mr. Root, Mr. Lineback, hold the comments for reconsidering with everybody. I'm sorry, Mr. Crowell.
Oh, no, that's all right, I, I'm just repeating myself. I don't want to reconsider every meeting what was decided at previous meetings. I don't want to reconsider every meeting what was decided at previous meetings. Whether I agree with it or not, I'm going to vote no.
And I agree with you on that, you know, from that standpoint. And just from a, you know, to call it a point of order or what, but the, I was brought up, I served a lot of years on boards of education and I did new member orientation, I did leadership and I did advanced boardmanship training for new school board members. What I would train, what I'd tell new school board members, when you get into the parliamentary procedure portion of it, majority rules. You deal with the issue and then some other time you can, the majority will switch to another issue in that person or that majority then has a right to do things. Do I agree with our attorney's ruling? I don't know if I have a power, you know, if we can, we could, we could overrule, but you do it at risk when you do those kind of things, when you overrule your attorney on certain things. But no, I don't like, I don't like the procedure, Mr. Krail, but it's what we, what we're dealt and what we're allowed to do. And we, our attorney, we need to vote on it, but I'm not going to support it because the decision was taken at a public meeting with all due procedures and Mr. Rolson. Anyway, okay, so we had a motion, second, and it's more in comments.
I'd like to, and this pains me, but I have to, well, the part that pains me is the underlying issue. I don't have a problem agreeing with Mr. Krail. I wholeheartedly agree. So I'm going to vote not to reconsider, even though I would love to not have the city manager inside. I just don't feel it, you know, from a principle standpoint, I have to go with Mr. Krail's principles, that one and done.
I too, excuse me, I too agree that this is, that we have voted on this, we voted with all due procedure, with comments, et cetera. I also want to clarify that unless I am mistaken, I have the advertisement for this city manager was basically a slightly rewritten version of the last one. And the last one says, and I quote, "The city manager will be required to reside within the Mount Door city limits." So that, as far as I know, that this was a requirement for the last city manager and I don't recall the level of discussion about that requirement during the last go-round. But as I said, I support what Mr., I agree with everything that Mr. Krail says and I will vote against this motion.
Got it. Mr. Krail brings up very valid points. It's got to be frustrating to have to try to rehash everything else session after session. Ms. Tillot, is, did you read this, the question, did you read this from the Mr. Pastoo's application?
This...
So that I can understand it?
No. This is the application for the, for this one. However, however, I had the, when I compared the two side by side, that was one of the things that was still, it was in the Mr. Pastoo one as well. So just making that point. We can clarify that with Ms. Johns. I have the old ad at home on my home computer, but I don't have it on this.
Yeah, it's probably a little late for that now.
But I will, you know, bet you a dollar to dumb nuts that it's the same, exactly the same.
I wish there was some way we could let the, Mr. Slaven know that we are flexible or liberal, maybe is the right word to say, on that issue. I don't even mind if it's noted down based upon Mr. Krail's comments, which are valid. But I do support the idea of having, eliminating the residency requirement. And we can then, just like we do with master's degrees, we can then say, well, we'll hire you if you live in the city. We can tackle it that way, so.
I think, I think Mr. Slaven is, in his professional standards also, he's knowing that things can be, if he has somebody of high caliber local, let's say, to our area and who's willing to come, wants to talk to us and from that, I think he's got enough knowledge that he would approach in an indirect way the council and let us know which ones and the people he would bring, that we can work on this in the future. I think, like you're saying, it's perfectly okay. The unfortunate part about the reconsideration on this one item, that it's already been published, there's people already submitting their applications and understand, again, that reconsideration vote and why we should do it or maybe shouldn't do it. But this one has been published. The master's degree portion is a lot easier to deal with because on the count of, that gives us a complete flexibility with that, you know, with that issue. But the, but the city manager, the residency requirement, that's already been published out there and that's going to be a tough one to pull back on that one. And that'll give, I think, conversations with Mr. Slaven might allow, if he had anybody there, maybe go ahead forward with the process and then either at that point, coming down the road, it'd be a council decision whether or not to interview him or not to interview him at that point. And then we've got to bring it out to council, or, excuse me, to the public, and I saw a hand raised, so come on up and so we can get out here maybe tonight, reasonable. I was hoping, I was early home for 7:00, I saw that clock going closer, I says, 7:30 looks like a duel tonight, but it didn't happen.
Mike Masterson, 7887 Crossbones Way. First of all, you know, I'm in my sixth house. I built five of them. I moved each time I moved because it was an opportunity in my professional career to advance me and my family and the quality of our lifestyle. A city manager is a professional. And I believe Mr. Lineback nodded the other day when I said, when this discussion was, came up quite two weeks ago, city managers are used to a bit of a nomadic lifestyle. It is up to them to make a decision if they see an opportunity to accept it or turn it down. I accepted the opportunities that were made available to me. They were advancing for me and my family and my career. It meant I had to build another house, which meant I had to furnish another house, which meant I had to paint another house. But I did that because it was good for my career. As we sort through candidates, they come up, the, everything that is in the requirement, quote, the standards, the expectations, is a negotiable point. It's a contract and any, and any contract is going to have negotiable points. You make the decision on your part as the seven council members as to which ones you're not going to fold on and which ones you might show some flexibility on. Just like when you're an attorney, you make some decisions as to when you're going to allow a person to, well, I'll plead this down to a lower level. I'm not going to, I'm going to move it forward, I want to get a conviction, whatever, we're going to achieve our objective. The requirement for the city manager to live in the city was in the last profile that, by which Mr. Pastoo was hired. It was a negotiation between him and Mrs. Herkst and Mrs. Herkst negotiated that he did not have to live within the city. I was here when that discussion took place. So remember, you have your standards, you have your expectations, but everything will be negotiable. You aim for here. I don't think you're all going to get here. This will be quite acceptable. So this angst over some of these things, I think, I don't know. Am I accurate about the job being somewhat vagabondish, Mr. Lineback?
Do I have to answer that question?
We will leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. I hope that we move this thing along.
We will, we will. Thank you for your comments.
I got a bat, I got a baseball game, I should have been watching 10 minutes ago.
Okay. Real quick, the, correct me if I'm wrong, our city managers' contracts, they're a, basically a net will type contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
With the mayor council? Absolutely.
Okay, so this is the issue that we face as a council, because it is a net will type contracts that we have to establish a residency requirement, okay, to have a residency requirement, you know, the, you know, a non-residency requirement. What happens, I guess, with, in some of those cases, if you have a three, or a residency requirement, if you have a three-year contract, okay, people are, I think, a little more willing to take a chance because they know they have a contract for three years, minding on both parts, you know, with different things. Superintendents, school superintendents, again, where I used to work, school superintendents had three-year contracts, business administrators were giving up the three-year contracts. So you had some, even though a school superintendent had a longevity of two years, I think our city managers throughout the state had a longevity of about two years. You know, so it's not, so you have that, that kind of situation, but if we had longer-term contracts, if we're allowed to have longer-term contracts, then I think, you know, they don't mind moving to a city at that point. So this is where I think my argument was also with the, you know, eliminating that. But again, public, excuse me for interrupting the public on that one.
Okay. My only comment, whether you do residency or not...
Oh, so you name it.
Oh, I was at Ward, 318 East Jackson Avenue, Mount Door. If you're going to have that requirement for residency and all these people are going to apply based on that, they're going to be interviewed based on that, and then, I heard you say you will make an exception and I'm not sure, I'm not comfortable with that because that could potentially cause some liability issues for discrimination of some kind if you're in that situation, so.
It's possible. Anything along those lines would be in conference with the attorney at that point.
Well, but you advertise you're going to interview and then you're going to have some hidden qualification that is not relevant. You need to make it, everybody understand that the residency requirement is not fixed. I don't think it's fair not to. I'm surprised you so cavalier, in such a cavalier manner, said, oh, we'll just look over that if we need to. Well, but it's not right, okay? And I assume you want to do the right thing, not just the convenient thing.
Please.
Okay? So I just throw that out. You closed off the comments about the qualifications. There's a reason that most companies, when they apply for jobs, that will have that equivalency statement, that's to allow for experience.
That's what we have.
And I don't, if we get more resumes this time, it will be because you've let everybody in. And there are people that just send resumes. No qualification, so staff time, that productivity might be impacted just by changing that. If it matters, fine, if it doesn't, but just consider it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looks like you maybe had a comment, Mr. Root?
Not to prolong the matter, but just if you have a residency requirement, okay, and you have applicants, and I think some of the discussion has been about maybe folks assistants who are nearby Mount Door, as they apply and if you rank them such that you want to negotiate with them, what can happen, and it's perfectly legitimate, seeing it happen in other cities, is as you're negotiating, a person could say, well, I need this amount if I'm going to move into the city because I have to relocate. And, but I'll need this amount if I don't, and they're nearby. And in Oviedo, for example, there was a person across the county line, in Orange County, they weren't in Oviedo, but the contract provided that they would put their house up for sale and then make bona fide good faith efforts to move to Oviedo. So you can, you can have the residency requirement, but it can be phased, it could be, it could be adjusted and that's perfectly normal. So you're not tied to it, even though you advertise that you want a, and will be a Mount Door resident.
Is there any other comments from the public?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, back to council, any other comments? Okay, this is a vote for reconsidering removing the residency requirement.
Mr. Rolson?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Krail?
No.
Mr. Roulette?
No.
Mr. Slavy?
No.
Ms. Tillot?
No.
Mr. Jerome?
No.
Okay. Okay, so is, any other that...
I have, I have one thing, it's rather important and I know we were talking about the agenda and things were slightly dysfunctional in getting things on here. I'm energetic and I want to get things on here. I don't have a mechanism and I come in here and I, I feel as though, when I bring things up, I'm bullying it onto the agenda and it's not, it's not in a way that seems best. It seems to me that our charter as understood, that gives the, somebody the ability to put stuff on the agenda so we can talk about it and move. And I can't, I don't know, maybe I'm just the difficult one to understand it or if there's something in our setup that needs help.
If I may?
Go ahead, please.
Mike, my experience has been many years, a council member at the end during council discussion will bring something like you did. Right at that time, without a vote necessarily, the mayor would ask, is there a consensus to bring this forth at the next council meeting? Nothing really formal, but it was kind of like a gentleman, gentle ladies agreement to handle it that way. I don't see why you can't do that here, right at the time, say, you know, I want to talk about performance criteria. City manager, I would require you, as a condition of my appointment, to have an evaluation because I don't want to wait until this third year and find out I've been doing so poorly, it's over. I want to know, I want to fix it and I want to make sure I'm doing what you want. So my point is, I think that you could at the meeting, such as tonight, if you all agree, if a member wants to bring up something for a subsequent meeting, if there's a consensus to do so, then we'll schedule it. And rather than a charter or, you have rules of procedure, it's very thick and very lengthy and whatever. I don't think you have to do that if you have this policy among yourselves. Just my suggestion.
I appreciate that and I think in the future we'll attempt to do that and then, and I will definitely attempt to do that and kindly remind me, as the council people, if I don't do that, and we ask for that, there's consensus and we'll do it that way.
It makes some sense.
Yeah, and I have no problem with that. I think we've been looking for more votes before you have items put on there, but we can do it with the consensus and that'd be really good to do at that point. Move things along, we can get things more accomplished, get the items that the council people want, get them on there quicker and we can work that way, not an issue whatsoever. Any other comments from the council?
I'll wait, Jim.
Okay.
I'm going to wait. Go to Jim.
Got a second, let's go. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye.